Okay, we'll call a special meeting of the Pennington County Commission for August 23rd to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, pledge of allegiance led by PJ Conover.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to approve the agenda or not? No, okay. So we'll jump right into our purpose for this meeting today and we'll call on Bob Wery from the Department of Agriculture to introduce people that are with him and set the stage for our presentation.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you here today. Certainly that, you know, with a special meeting like this, it takes out of your time and, but I think this is some really, really crucial stuff. And when people first see this information, and I think when I was here about a year ago and we talked about this, you were kind of going like, well, how does that work and what does this mean for us and everything? But I think you'll start seeing that and hopefully I can start tying the pieces together with that by the end of the, by the end of our activity here today. But before we go any farther, I want to introduce to you Todd Kays from Northeast Council of Governments. Todd is the one in his organization that actually prepared the county site analysis and I'll let him talk a little bit more of that, but Todd will, will join us here in a little bit. And Terry Labrie, who is our finance administrator, sitting right back here, Terry, she joined us as well too today. It's some of her program and the Value Added Finance Authority that actually paid for this, for the county site analysis. So she's kind of here just seeing what moral support and seeing what we're doing here. So I'll turn it over to Todd and let him go from there and then I'll come back on a little bit, a little bit later, I have a short presentation after Todd finishes. But, you know, if you have questions specifically about county site analysis and especially methodology, he's the person to ask, so. Todd?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nice to meet you all. Again, I want to thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to have a special meeting to accommodate me. I'm going to be meeting with the Mead County Commissioners tomorrow and at their meeting and this saved me a trip across the state and so I do appreciate that very much. Again, my name is Todd Kays and I'm the Executive Director of the First Planning District or the First District Association of Local Governments. We're located up there in the northeast part of the state, the blue that you see. We are one of six regional planning and development districts, very similar to the Black Hills Council of Government that you have out here on the western part of the state. I worked with Blaze Emerson on a wide variety of issues. So that's just kind of who I am and where I work. Today, we want to spend just a little time giving you an overview of the county site analysis program and specifically to talk about the results of what we found here in Pennington County. But just a little background on the program. Back in 2012, I was working with Grant County and Grant County has a cheese plant in Millbank there and one of the things that their Economic Development Corporation was looking at wanting to do is how can we find more locations for new dairies to support that cheese plant in Grant County? So we came up with a methodology or an idea to say if we were going to cite a dairy in Grant County, what do we need to consider? Access to good roads, electricity, water, they have zoning, specific zoning requirements in their county. So we took all that information and we found about 200 sites that would be pretty good places for dairy development in their county. Shortly after that, Paul Cos, both with the Department of Ag, reached out to me in 2013 and said, could you take your analysis? And the state was interested in taking it and expanding it, not to look at just at dairy sites, but maybe hog operations, maybe looking at locations for new cheese plants, ethanol plants, grain loading facilities, industrial development sites? And could you come up with an idea and do a study and see if something we could replicate across the state? So we did four counties in 2013 and since then, we've actually completed 41 counties across the state. You can see up on the map, those areas in blue were the first round, the yellow were the second round. Those areas in the green are the ones that we completed last year. Hopefully, nobody's colorblind. And now we've had about 14 to 16 counties that we're looking at doing next year. Those would be in the tan that we're seeing up there. Really what it came down to, working with the Department of Ag, was, you know, the real purpose is, is trying to find good locations for what we call CAFO development, concentrated animal feeding operations. That's where we have a large number of animals confined to a space, whether it's in an open feedlot or under roof. Also, we looked at what we called agriculturally related commercial industrial development or AID sites. And that could, like I said, be a cheese plant, an ethanol plant, something that would support agricultural development. And the main reason that we were doing this is to try to find good planning for those counties that do planning and zoning, to take a look at what their policies are. But also primarily, I think, from the state's perspective, was to take a look at trying to find locations, sites, individuals that'd be interested in doing some sort of economic development through, that's agriculture related, and then taking that information and working with those people that are in the business of developing and marketing those types of sites for development. So it looked like it, back in August of 2014, you at the county commission passed a resolution asking the state to be involved in this process. We had a few ahead of you in line and we were just taking them as we got and so we finally received approval last November from the Vafa Board to do another handful of counties and we were able to start in December of this last, of 2015, asking for information from a variety of resources in the area. We did our analysis, the first part of this year, we submitted our findings to the state and here we are today talking about what we found. Begin with, from a methodology standpoint, it's really important to note that we aren't making any claim that these are the only sites for ag-based development to occur in your county. It's, there are going to be other places. These were the sites that met a certain specific set of criteria and we'll talk a little bit about that. Again, we were just looking for the best places that could meet our specific criteria. So what were we looking at? We were looking at electricity, how close you were to electricity. We were looking at real water systems, how close you were to a real water line. Does that real water system even have capacity in the line size or in their water tanks to get the water to you? On the eastern part of the state, the original methodology is we were looking at shallow aquifer. Don't have a lot of shallow aquifer information on this side of the state, so we had to augment that a little bit by using proximity to certain bodies of water classified by DNR on whether or not they were a certain permanent water body. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that. Zoning, we looked at county zoning regulations. Your county doesn't have a lot of specific zoning regulations when it comes to animal feeding operations, but you do have some commercially zoned property out there in the county. We also looked at building sizes, a building parcel sizes, a minimum area of 40 acres. And then when it came to the AID, we also looked at proximity to rail, how close you were to rail. And if we didn't have a lot of rail, we were also looking at areas within a mile of certain communities. So we took all that information and we came up with a hierarchy. And if you were a CAFO location that was adjacent to a county-state hard surface road, you had capacity at either 30,000 or 150,000 gallons a day of water, you were adjacent to three-phase power, you had no zoning issues, and you had a 40-acre building site, that was the best site you could have for either, what we were looking at is low-water CAFOs or high-water CAFOs. So what's the difference? The low-water CAFO is basically 30,000 gallons a day, which is about enough water you would need to support a 5,000-head sow operation. A large, high-water CAFO would be a 3,000-head dairy or about 150,000 gallons a day. So that's kind of given us an idea of the range. And so if you had everything in the best, but maybe you only had one in the good column, the best you could be is a good site. And so you always were at the point of the methodology to find out wherever your lowest common denominator, that was what you were classified. We should note that we didn't look at federal lands, we did not look at state lands in the analysis, nor did we look at topography, something that we don't worry so much about on the eastern part of the state. But on the western part of the state, we do recognize that some of these sites, we might be on paper, on a two-dimensional piece of paper, look like it might be good. We get out there and to actually take a look and it might be something that's just like this. But without having on the ground and limited resources, we just went with the best we could do on a, on a document-based research. So what we found here in Pennington County, 1,133 good sites, 112 better sites, no best sites on either low or high-water CAFOs, 720 good sites, high-water CAFO, 66 better sites. So the first question is, wow, that's a lot of sites. How come we have so many sites available in Pennington County? And primarily, I think, what I would say is that you have limited zoning restrictions. Where I live in Cuyahoga County, you have to be a half a mile away from somebody that wants a thousand head of cows. In Clark County, it's a mile away and so if you have those setbacks from residences, that would restrict the numbers. But here in Pennington County, there is no specific rule or regulation that we were able to ascertain. As far as, the other thing that came into being, a lot of the good sites, we didn't have a lot of specific information on the quantity or quality of the streams, rivers and lakes that we were using, the two-mile separation distance. So we maybe find a site that on paper looks good, but we find out that the water is brackish, it wouldn't be good for animals, or maybe there's not enough capacity in that stream. So we have to take that with a grain of salt. If I was looking at really focusing any efforts on outreach and development, I would probably look at these better sites. Those better sites are basically sites where the real water system has told us, we either have capacity of either supply or distribution, we just don't have both. And in talking with the Lyman County, I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head now, West River Lyman Jones Real Water System, they basically told us that there are locations within their service area that has the size of pipe needed to serve those water levels. However, about 90% of their current water resource is already being allocated. So if somebody wanted to go out onto the eastern part of the county where that real water system is located and wanted to plant a 5,000-head sow operation, it's not that they couldn't do it, but there would have to be some investment done by the real water system to accommodate that specific development. You can kind of see out here where the real water system has shown us some of the better sites and that's just where the locations that we found there. We looked over here, close to Rapid, there were, there are four better sites for CAFO development in that area. But you can kind of see where we found locations for good and better CAFO development across the county. This would be for the low waters. We have a few more low-water better sites than we did high-water better sites. But just to kind of give you an indication, it's basically what we thought where the real water systems could accommodate water, we had a better, a better idea of where those sites could possibly develop. Now, when we come to AID, very similar methodology. The only thing there is we had to take a look at rail. If you have a county zoning regulations where you've got property that's already zoned for commercial industrial development, you get ranked a few more points higher on that. If I'm planning, if you've got a land use plan that identifies areas for commercial industrial development, that's a better classification. If you have no zoned commercial development areas, those would only get a good, a good in the hierarchy. Again, proximity to electricity, water and roads was very similar. The one thing we remember here from an AID perspective and even from the CAFO perspective, we did not look at township roads in the analysis that were further than a mile away from existing county or state, state roads. So it took a large part of the county out of the analysis and the reason for that is if we were going to plop 5,000 cows, that we knew that's going to have road issues that we need to get grains in and out and forages in and out and then hauling the product out, we knew that we did, a lot of those township roads were never built for that specific type of traffic. But when we take a look at the results in the AID, nothing in the high water. That's because there, to be a high-water AID, you had to have 405,000 gallons a day. And you notice that we didn't have any best at 150,000 gallons for the CAFOs, so it's easy to understand why we had no high-water AIDs. The low-water AIDs are 430 sites, 431 sites located out through, throughout the county. Again, looking at areas where we have, along some rail lines, where we have real water systems and in and around Rapid was the highest concentration, which makes the most sense because you already have areas that are jointly zoned with the city for some commercial and industrial development out in those areas. So we're not really telling you something that you probably don't already know. So some of the critical findings really, that really kind of drive this whole study is, coming back to is the availability of water. That's the big unknown. I like to think that this analysis, we basically have got people to the dining room table and we might have a fork and we might have a plate, but we might not have a full place setting. And that really is going to require more study, more outreach and working with the landowners to determine whether or not some of these sites make any real sense for development. From a macro level, what we've learned here is that throughout the state and our 41 counties, we have a lot of sites for AID development and for CAFO development. I've been focusing our efforts here on these better and best sites because there we have good water resources, primarily to accommodate AID and CAFO development across the state. You know, one of the things that we talked about, why, why are we looking at this? Well, some counties have looked at, because of their zoning rules, have found out that they have no sites for CAFO development. And those, a lot of it in the eastern part of the state, you've got these counties where they adopted zoning regulations 20 years ago, not understanding what the real implication of those zoning rules were. And what we see is now somebody who might have a farmer who's got 500 head of cows today and all of a sudden now he wants to go to 1,000, well, now the state says you have to get a permit. Well, he comes to the county and the county can't issue him a permit, so they've effectively capped his operation. So you're seeing some of the things that are coming out of this research is that some counties are reviewing their zoning rules to say that maybe that's what, what was our, our intent wasn't to do that. Five counties have 15 or fewer CAFO sites, is what we were finding there. As far as moving forward, what South Dakota Department of Ag wants to do, and Bob can talk a little bit more about this, is, and what, how we've looked, used the information in my part of the world, is that we've been doing some outreach. We've been working with the county commissions, we've been working with economic developers, Focus Water Town, you know, and the like, to talk to these landowners that, to let them know that you have a piece of property that you may or may not be interested in selling or developing, but if you were, let us know. And if not, those 1,000 sites that we had identified, there might only be 10. But that's how some counties are doing. Some counties are taking this information and they're saying, thanks Todd, very nice, it's just a 13th, 16th century wrench that we never hardly ever used, but we'll keep it in our toolbox just in case we have to pull it out once in a while. And some counties are being very actively engaged, calling all the landowners, finding out whether or not, you know, they have any interest. What we're also finding out here is that some of the sites we found, they look pretty good on paper, but then we go out there and take a look at them and there's a slew in the middle of the site. Or the topography might be odd, or maybe the road isn't as good as what the county superintendent thought it was going to be. So the real power of this whole process has been is the development of a database that's built on specific criteria that we're able to do queries on and counties can utilize and economic developers can utilize. We now have the ability to contact specific landowners with this information. We've actually cited some facilities. The Rembrandt Chicken Plant is a 6 million chicken operation that's coming outside of Lake Preston. And this site that they are going on wasn't one of the sites that we immediately identified, it was on the other side of the road. But they had to buy the person out, house out, so that's why, but it's close enough. Brookings in Cuyahoga County has used this information to review development plans and processes. Many of our counties, the GOED will send out what's called a request for proposal, maybe it's an economic development project that's looking at the state of South Dakota and the state says, hey, if you're interested in applying for, making us know that you have information to respond to this RFP, this data is then going in to letting people know that we have a site that's available for a processing facility or what have you.
I apologize, I'm getting a migraine, so I'm going to go.
Oh, no, I hope I'm not causing it.
Oh, no, I had one yesterday, sorry. I just wanted to interrupt.
No, that's fine, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm almost done. And basically, the whole concept of this thing is really to create a culture or a relationship that's, it's kind of hard to get your hands around, but basically it's counties using the data, it's the state and the counties working together, establishing more goodwill on economic development throughout the state. This program is, was recently, in 2014, received an innovation award for being innovative on, and doing different site selection. And the governor supports this program, he's mentioned it as recently as his State of the State address last year. And so we, it's something that we think that's got some legs and what I'm hoping here, I want, I should, I'd be remiss, I want to thank the Black Hills Council of Governments, Blaze and his staff for helping us along interpreting things, telling me about stuff out here in, out West River that I don't necessarily know because I spend more of my life East River. But I would be more than glad to answer any questions. I know Bob has a few things that he would like to say as well.
Any questions for Todd?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the thing that I was curious about after reading your report is what would work out here? I mean, you have this data, but the real reality is we need a beef processing plant out in this end of the state.
Right.
Is there something here that works?
Well, if you're talking a beef processing plant based upon what we were able to, that's a high-water user. We'd need a lot of water to process that beef. And if we were looking at beef processing, it's not going to happen in the rural area of the county because what we're seeing there is that the rural water systems do not have the capacity. So you're going to have to then look at probably something more close to Rapid or some areas where we have a water system that would be able to afford the capacity to have that happen. So that's, that's the, that's, the study is not going to tell you, the study's going to tell you that you probably can't cite a beef processing plant in the rural area of Pennington County, which is probably something that we already knew. But we did, we do know that there are some locations where you already have zoned industrial, commercial, that's got close, good proximity to roads and electricity, that's on the outskirts of Rapid City, that there are properties there that that would be good. Now the question then becomes to be working with the municipal utilities to determine whether or not the water capacity is there to treat, not only provide, but treat the processed wastewater afterwards. So there are some locations that, that it would, the economic development people in Rapid could use to do outreach and say, oh, I didn't know we had three-phase power or the roads or natural gas or whatever in these locations. So that's how we've used it in some of the other larger communities, citing, I think we were looking at citing an ethanol plant out, out East River. Good question. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Todd? This is kind of specific, but I was curious about the water requirements of your poultry deal at Lake Preston.
Well, what we're doing there, the water requirements there is, the reason that we, the specific site that they chose didn't meet our requirements of the study, but was right across the road, is because we knew that the water was not there at the time, but there's going to be a $9 million investment to run real water about 17 miles to get to that site, which now Kingsbury County is looking at going through a tax increment financing project to help out with the project. But that's the, the water requirements, it needs, it needs a real water source to come in to, to supply that area out by Lake Preston.
Does anyone from the audience have questions or comments?
Bob? Well, thank you, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and I do appreciate that you've taken time to make it, make a special appointment for me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Get yours up here. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't read, my bifocals aren't helping.
Maybe I'll have to, I'll be the same, same place here. I don't think so.
That's better slide than I got anyway.
Hey, look at that, we got a nice sunflower there today. So let's go fishing. Now you have all this information, you got your tackle box loaded up here a little bit. Maybe as Todd talked about, we're sitting at the dinner table, but we don't know, we don't know what's for dinner. We don't know if we have, if we, if we need a steak knife and we don't know if we're going to need the salt and pepper. And maybe we don't even know what kind of wine we're going to drink. So as we, as we move forward, I've been challenged by one thing since I've been out here. I did this for 10 years when I was in, in Pierre, I covered the entire state and I kind of went where I was needed. But now I have a western office and I, not that I don't ever go back to the eastern part of the state, I try to focus my efforts on western South Dakota and I look at the very unique challenges that are presented by, you know, who we are here in western South Dakota. And, and some of this, as you see on the, on the slide up there, it, it may kind of take on a cynical tone, we're attempting to rope the wind. We're in a sea of agriculture, western South Dakota, it's, it's a, that's what we are. We're cows grazing out on the prairies and, you know, some fields of wheat and now a little bit of corn and sunflowers and everything like that, but are we, are we looking to catch fish? So in terms of economic development, what are we trying to do? And obviously tourism and the, and the development that can happen here in Rapid City and the metro area are a lot different and we want that as well too. We don't say that, we're, we're not saying that that's bad, we're saying is that maybe we should be looking at some other things as well too. And, you know, the things that are in front of us. Obviously for agriculture, the challenge is here is to feed the world. Now, obviously, we will never, ever feed all the world, but certainly South Dakota produces way more than what we could ever consume, which is good because there's a lot of hungry people out there in the world. So as we go forward, you know, we have to look at how, how do we do this efficiently? How do we, how, how do we respond to the market resources or the market signals to say, what should we be doing? Well, we do a very good job of producing some of the best beef cattle in the world. I would venture to say is that the cattle that come from this area are none better. They, they, they are very, very much at the top. But in the same token, is that they leave this area pretty quickly. And unlike a few years ago, they, they leave here with the jobs as well too and the opportunities. And ironically, that the feed that we used to feed them also leaves the area, pretty much as quickly as we can get it. All the forages, the, even the, even the grains and the concentrated activity, and we, we start actually becoming importers for western South Dakota for some of the feedstuffs, the concentrated feedstuffs or proteins, even though we could potentially produce them here in, in western South Dakota. South Dakota output by industry in terms of millions of dollars, $25.2 billion ag industry in the state of South Dakota. When you look at the output, we look at the, the millions of dollars, certainly crops, livestock and other ag, it's a, it's a big, it's a big piece of the pie, okay? And I don't think, obviously that's not a, not a huge bit of information that somebody, oh, wow, I never knew that. No, I don't think that's the case. oh, wow, I never knew that, no, I don't think that's the case. Same way with the jobs. You know, we're we're looking at over $100,000, $100,000 jobs in South Dakota have direct relationship to agriculture, that's a pretty big piece of the pie. So what are we in a, what what is South Dakota agriculture out here out west? Obviously, we're the beef cattle and we're the feeds and the forages, both a significant portion of what we do and what consumes our time and our resources. The grain, certainly as we see in eastern Pennington and certain areas throughout the western part of the state, we're seeing a lot of that, sheep and wool up here to the north and various various places, obviously, western Pennington County has the forest, which is an agricultural resource as well, too. Bison, we're the number one producer of bison in in the United States, and we think of that as being maybe kind of a small thing, because in terms of the cattle industry, it is a very small thing. But we are known for bison, so that I think that that really leads us down the road for a few opportunities there. Agri-tourism. Now we have an opportunity to maybe look at agriculture, that number one industry, and the tourism portion of it, and say, maybe there's a maybe there's a place where those two 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 industries combine. And I think there is, you know, we we talk about agricultural experiences and farm tours and things like that. I came from, for for a short time out in the out in the private sector from the winery. And so that is, that is a combination of tourism and agriculture, right? And and look at the impact that that has had, not only in terms of the tourism industry, but the for the things that impact you, the things like the roads and the and the impact to water systems and and discharge systems as well, too. And other things is that that we that we that we don't even see, but certainly, probably come across your plate from time to time, like local foods. So the things that when we talk about, you know, if somebody's got a small commercial garden out here, how does that impact you? Does it does it change how you think about, is this a commercial producer? And should they, maybe they're producing $10,000 an acre of revenue from a single acre, are they a commercial operation? And do, you know, how should they be taxed as well, too? And maybe they're driving up and down the road, or maybe they have a farm stand there that increases their their traffic on that road considerably as well, too. I'll I'll give you the the electronic copy of this and and update it as well, this is kind of the graphic presentation of what we do here in South Dakota and how we rank in the United States. But what what does this number industry in the state produce? Obviously, you know, we have our, we have the ones that are number one, but they're not necessarily always the biggest industries, okay? Honey, oats, bison, sunflowers, flaxseed, hay, that is one we where we are very big in. But when when we start talking about the things that we do, like the beef cattle, the swine, the the corn, we're down the list a little bit, but we're still still awfully big producers. So, grass to groceries. As you look at this and and as people within the community look at this, we we have some things that are out there in front of us. As we as we look at all these resources that we have in front of us, and and, you know, how do we deal with that? You know, for the for the people that have been here a long time, and I grew up near Sturgis over in Bob's County there, and and, you know, I saw, back to back to Nancy's comment, do could we ever have beef processing back here? I was doing this job, I think maybe I was in the second year, when they had the fire at Black Hills Park. According to the Rapid City Journal, we lost 400 jobs that day. 400 jobs. Now, if I could come to you and say, boy, I've got a project that that that's ready to come in here and would create 400 jobs, I hope that everybody in this room would do cartwheels. Now, obviously, there's some real challenges to bringing in something that has, potentially has that much impact, and always and as always, the devil's in the details, right? Well, who what kind of people would be employed in those jobs, right? And what kind of other, what kind of economic impact would that have? And how would it how would it impact our water? How would it impact our sewer systems and so on like that? But 400 jobs, that's a big deal. That's a big deal. And the economic impact that from the payroll alone is absolutely amazing. But certainly, we also have the charge in front of us to, what I've seen, too, as well is to boost our current our current ag businesses, or perhaps perhaps actually retain them. You know, we've we've looked at, you know, some of the small communities, I just came across my desk the other day that the that the meat processing plant as well in Wall is up for sale. You know, what happens if that goes away? What does that mean? And obviously, there's some real implications there, not only for our local communities, not a huge deal, but for our ranchers that are in the community as well, too. If you if you've tried to get a get a beef or maybe a hog slaughtered at your local plant lately, you you probably know some of the issues that are that are out there. Adding value to current production, cleaning, sorting, marking, that's a that's a great first step, right? I would say the wool warehouse up in up in Belfus is a great example of this. We're we're combining all this wool production, and they're going out and they're marketing that wool all over the world, and trying to get the best value from that, from, you know, whether whether somebody's building building socks with it or military uniforms or maybe some other industrial application, but it all comes from this area. That's that's a good example of value added, and it's very simple value added. Could we could we have textile or maybe some scouring or or some other process within this community? Maybe so. That's that's an example of an AID site. My guess is that probably would take a fair amount of water to to put something like that together. New production processing business or capacity? We looked at, you know, obviously, with meat processing, I would love a meat processing plant out here. We we've seen the challenges with the one up in Aberdeen, but again, it goes back to maybe even even embracing what we have here now. If we look at, you know, Bruce over at at Western Buffalo or Ron and Jackie up in Sturgis, what can happen there? If they if they decided to transition, which it which it will happen, right? Some point in time, they're going to say, I'm too late, too too old to continue to sit here and cut meat all day. So now what are the, what are, if we have some new owners going to do with this plant? Okay? So, can we can we do new production? Certainly, would we ever would we ever look at confined animal feeding operations? Would someone want to put a put a layer facility out here in in rural Pennington County? Does that make sense? And for you guys, that's, you know, you'll be confronted with that. I think it does from a from an economic development point, but that's that's the team I'm on. I'm a cheerleader for economic development in western South Dakota. And then certainly, the recruitment from outside of our area for those businesses. We talked about Rembrandt, they're a national company. They sell eggs all over the United States, okay? Certainly, in the governor's office of economic development sees those, the the leads kind of get distributed, and for your economic development people, they would say, well, yeah, are are we poised, are you poised as a county to look at this? To say, boy, we'd like to have something like this, or maybe we don't want anything like that? Now, obviously, you represent the people, and if I would say a chicken plant, well, I'd say, well, what what does that mean? What's a chicken plant all about? Is it jobs? Is it is it smell? Is it a place for our grains to go? Does it mean that there's a that there's a new revenue source here? Can we raise our taxes? Can we support our local grain farmers? So, with all that, I I have to think is that there's there's lots of issues there, this is, we're again, we're sitting down at the table here now. Obviously, with the county site analysis program, we have all this information, at least the start of the information, we've got the invitation to the table, we're we're sitting down, we maybe we have our plate and our fork with us, but we don't know what's on, you know, on the menu yet. And but I I hope that that it lays the groundwork for what what might become. Obviously, still, the big challenge in front of me is to say, you know, what do we want? Or do we want, as you see, the the on the bottom left there, you know, a small hog facility, they're just really clean and simple, and, you know, they're right outside the, in that particular case, right outside of a soybean field, boy, that makes a lot of sense, especially where you're where you're growing some of that. The the other big facility, more of an AID, does that make sense to have some type of a grain processing facility? The one that came across my desk just here in the last couple of weeks was a bird seed plant. You know, would that be a good thing for for Wall, South Dakota? You know, let's see, I see millet, I see sorghum, I see corn, I see wheat, all those things that, you know, that we that we think about bird seed, ah, does that make sense? I think so. So it's a really compelling issue, but but where do we go from here? We we want to see in here what is contemporary ag production and processing? What things are out there, what does this mean? Is it, does this mean for Nancy, a, you know, a beef processing plant? I'd like to see that, that kind of makes sense, but maybe even intermediate, maybe that means some more, you know, some more feedlots here, so that we have that that base. You know, obviously, when you get up into Butte County, or you get down into Fall River County, there is quite a bit of capacity for feeding beef cattle. And as opposed to sending them to Nebraska, Colorado, Kansas, or even to the eastern part of the state, why don't we have some some more feeding right here, few more jobs? And and one of the big things that the the typical layperson doesn't understand is that if, and and this this was brought to, you know, it was it was articulated very well in a project not too long ago. They said, for everything that we produce, we ship out, we ship out our product in truckloads. We bring in four truckloads of feed to ship out one truckload of our finished product, and actually, it's just an intermediate product. And if you take something like milk, it's because it's mostly water, it's it's much worse than that, or or much more impactful than that. So, as opposed to right now, the the model, let's say, in the dairy industry, and I'm not saying dairy, but this is a good example, in the dairy industry right now, we ship our soybeans, our corn, our hay, all out to California, where they don't have enough water, where they have too many people, where they have people that could care less whether agriculture comes and goes, and they try to do dairies and dairy processing out there. Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And in similar, that 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 there's all this stuff, we talk about the finished product that comes out, maybe the one truck of finished product that comes out, what about all the other nutrients that come out the backside of the cow? If that can go right back to the land where it was produced on, what does that mean for our community? And what does that mean for you guys? Well, when we have corn that gets produced out here or wheat that gets produced out here, we remove nutrients from the soils. How does that get replenished? We bring in either commercial fertilizer, or we put animal nutrient back on it. If that animal animal nutrient is just down the road, that's that's a pretty close, small little loop, and that really makes a lot of sense to me. So if we talk about carbon footprint, we are attempting to reduce the carbon footprint here, multi-fold here. As opposed to sending all this stuff out to California or someplace else, let's do it right here. We have wide open spaces, we have ag communities, and we have the production, let's see what we can we can do. Consider the opportunities for development, and and then look at the at the impact to the community. What would it be if we had extra jobs here? And obviously, South Dakota is a place where we where there, you know, most all the jobs, it's tough to find a tough to find a person to fill them, right? But, but as we as we bring people here, as we provide opportunities for the young people that grow up in our communities, instead of saying, well, there's nothing to do around here, I can't find a job, so I leave, I get my college education and I go someplace else. So, to kind of wrap this up, I I have, and I and I hope Holly has shared this with you, is that directly after the county commissioners convention in Sioux Falls next month, I'm planning on doing a short tour of some contemporary ag operations in eastern South Dakota. And not that I am trying to say, this is the model, this is what you need to do, I'm just showing you, trying to show you what what's on the horizon, what it looks like to have, you know, a small dairy that's very modern, what it's like to have a cheese processing plant, what it's like to have a modern hog plant, or some of these other things that, pardon me, hog plant, a a modern swine production facility, I want to show you that. Now, if any, I don't know if any of you are actually going, Holly said that maybe it was there, that that none of the commissioners were going, I'm not sure, I don't want to put you on the spot or anything like that, but if you have your 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 P and Z people or your, you know, any of the economic development people that you think need to be there as well, or could benefit from that, they're going down there, I'd love to have you. We're going to host you, we're probably going to feed you a couple of meals, the the county commissioner convention ends on Tuesday afternoon, we're going to do an activity that night, and then we'll have everything finished by mid-afternoon on Wednesday, so you can return. It requires on your part, one extra night, stay in Sioux Falls, and like I said, we'll we'll look at anybody, maybe even chamber people, talk to them tomorrow, but any of the economic development people or any of the leadership within the community that you'd say, well, boy, I'd like I'd like this person to go. And hopefully, that they can see that. And so they can also see the, you know, the kind of impact. What kind of what kind of impact does a 3,000-cow dairy have on the county roads? So, that would that maybe that'd be a good question. How many loads of milk do you haul out of here a day? But in the same token, it's like, okay, look at all those loads of fertilizer going out there, boy, that's really tough on those roads. Well, where does that fertility come from otherwise? They bring it in on a truck, it comes from a 110-car loading facility, and it's little little commercial prills, right?
So Bob, how long has your organization been in ag development, economic development?
Ag development's been around for at least 20 years. It's certainly, you know, at the at the state level, obviously, when we look at ag development, we are we are um akin to the governor's office of economic development, um, where they generally deal with more um commercial, uh, commercial ventures. But we also partner, if we had a, you know, if we had a cheese processing plant that was going in, we would be partnering um with that. And even some of these projects are the same way too, so.
Do you have a list of any of the organizations, uh, ag organizations that you helped in Pennington County, or have recruited outside ag-related businesses to Pennington County?
Well, you know, we really, we really don't, because uh, obviously, um, ag processing, um, in all of western South Dakota has pretty much contracted. You know, we, i- in the last fifteen years, we've lost a flour mill, a cheese plant. Actually, that was a little bit, that was probably twenty-some years ago, twenty-five years ago. We lost a dairy processing plant, we lost the Black Hills pack, or the beef processing plant. We've lost, and then there are more signs of the times as well too, uh, the, the, the market forces. We've lost, uh, you know, our sale barns and some of those things. And sometimes those are become, have just become more efficient with technology and, and stuff like that. But obviously, is there anybody out there actively doing this? I think any of the ag organizations kinda see this as the writing on the wall, but they, they're, they're wondering how to do this. Obviously, when you, uh, uh, you know, statewide level, if you look at the organizations like the um, South Dakota Corn Utilization Council, which is, which are the people that get all the checkoff money, in other words, every bushel of corn gets sold, they collect that fund and they use it. Um, they were the ones that actively uh promoted, pursued, and helped develop the ethanol industry in the eastern part of the state. But they also now are looking at um supporting animal feeding activities as well too. Because they realize, well, we just don't necessarily wanna put our corn on a hundred and ten car um train unit, but maybe we have opportunities to feed that right here in our communities.
Well, I think the bottom line that I'm hearing is how to do this.
How to do this.
Government agencies, um, zonings, who to contact. Um, even on some things I had with the city, people contacted me, and then I set them up either with uh economic development, or actually Marty Jackley helped me on one of the economic development things for Rapid City. So, I think the bottom line, people like how they get started. So, so once they get started, um, walk me through the process and how you would help them if I wanted to do, let's say, uh, um, again, a packing plant, a meat packing plant. Do they come to you and you say, okay, this is how we get started, or, or are you guys looking for these companies? How, how do we bring them to western South Dakota and say, this is the area that you wanna come? You guys are recommending that, or, or based on Todd's analysis, those are the areas you wanna go in South Dakota?
It's, it's really any number of, of answers to that question, and I hate for that to sound kind of like a government answer. But it really depends. Yeah, th- there's times when we will have projects that come to us and say, um, gee, do you have, do you have places that make sense um, to build a facility like this? And I will tell you that I have, uh, in terms of animal development, um, like a CAFO, and, and I'm, I'm not necessarily promoting that, but I am asking the questions and getting people to say, why not western South Dakota? Because we, we, we have some of the feed production, we have some of the wide open spaces. I don't know when it, we, we, we haven't had that r- real test yet. You know, we've, we, we have a few feedlots in the area and some pretty big ones. Um, but we, you know, we've never had somebody cite, uh, I guess there's one in Hocken County, um, a, a s- a large contemporary swine facility in western South Dakota.
So, Bob, do we have the rail facilities for producing egg and transporting it? Cause like you said, a lot of it's getting transported out, and they're, and a lot of the South Dakota grain or feed is getting transported, our cattle. Um, do we have those su- su- uh sufficient, affi- suffi- uh, facilities, sorry, you can tell.
I got you.
Gonna be a little bit dead, but facilities that actually can support that in South Dakota once you decide that these ag businesses should be in different areas in South Dakota. Cause I, I see that's a major uh component to, you know, going in the spaces that they're going.
Well, finished product, obviously, um, it's really pretty easy to move that by truck anymore. Especially if you're talking about perishable ag products. Eggs, obviously, once they come out of the chicken, the clock starts ticking. Wow, I, oh, that sounded bad.
Ticking chicken.
But, but literally, yeah, they, you know, if, if, if we have a layer facility here in South Dakota, um, and it's going, those eggs are going probably to the west coast. Now, think about in terms of what's real. Why would they locate a chicken facility in western, or, or in South Dakota?
Right.
Well, where does the corn belt end? It ends prob- pretty much at the Missouri River, right? So that's the last place for, almost all the way west to the west coast, that corn grows fairly, fairly liberally. Um, it's the last place when you have wide open spaces that you can cite places like this. Obviously, chickens eat other things besides just corn, so soybeans fit right along with that corn belt area. We've seen soybeans that weren't hardly even grown in the state of South Dakota twenty years ago, are, are just out here at our, at our front door here in next county or two. So all those things, of course, you know, a chicken can't eat a raw soybean. Chickens have to eat processed soybeans, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't put up a small processing plant um, in Belfush, or in Rapid City, and produce some soybeans, and have some really great high protein uh soy meal, and, you know, and uh some oil, so that we could sell, or, you know, and do whatever with. Um, lot, lot of opportunities like that. So in, in answer to, who do we, who, how do we make this happen? Um, I can be a first point of contact, I'm always out here, this is what I do every day. These are the types of things I keep my eyes and ears open to. And uh, y- you know, relationship to the ag tour, I wish I could take, you know, fifty people out there and kinda show them what's here. Not that there is anything wrong with what we do here, we do things here because of market signals. And, and a lot of times because of weather. Drought and weather tends to be a very limiting factor in western South Dakota. But doesn't mean that it, that it completely cripples us from doing things, especially with ag development.
It'd be in- interesting to see, on those ag dollars, how much is put into western South Dakota and how much was put in eastern South Dakota? Based on what industries that monies is going, that money is going to, so.
Well, like in the case of the corn, the corn industry, you know, most of the corn is grown in eastern South Dakota, so they develop a lot of that. Uh, the wheat people, um. Cattle and beef checkoff, you know, uh, how, how, how much do they support development? I think they support as much as they possibly can, um, and they support demand as well too.
Is there a governor's, like, area, ag.com or something for South Dakota? South Dakota dot org that we could look up to see how much is given to western South Dakota, eastern South Dakota? What those monies are given for, anything like that? And how much total amount does he give to ag every year?
I don't know if we, if we break it down a whole lot, obviously, in ag development, we have a fairly small budget. Um, and especially in terms of the entire state budget, it's just, it, it's very minimum. We have myself and three other com- three other people like this. We have one in, in Pierre, um, who also covers a lot of the, the, the tribal areas. Uh, we have one in Sioux Falls and one in Brookings as well too, that uh, um, that do ag development work like myself. Um, obviously, um, when we, when we talk about directing resources, um, part of it is kinda going to where we've had demand for it. And like I said, I'd worked ten years doing this, I went, I went where there was people that were asking. And there was, there was never a shortage of people asking to do something, whether it was, I wanna start a farmer's market, or I wanna build a hundred million dollar ethanol plant. Um, any one of those things, um, based on what the community wants. And I think that's the important part of about county site analysis, is it helps define, helps you define what you want. What should we be doing? What should we be tackling? And if you can, if you want, i- i- as much as that, you can charge me, or, or charge Blaze or any other of your economic development folks, is saying, boy, I would like to see, uh, a beef processing plant. Or maybe we need to really support the current one here, so we don't lose it. Yeah, that's, I, I, I hate to say that, to me even, even listen to me even saying those words. But those are the types of things that I think could probably get, um, probably garner a lot of support from like our Beef Industry Council, and from the governor, um, and from the legislature, the people that, you know, they're gonna write the checks. And, you know, government doesn't, doesn't do a lot. I mean, we, we can, um, we have finance programs, we have this program that we've kinda supported as well too. But just like you, you know, it's gotta come in from somewhere. Um, and we're, we're real mindful in terms of what we trying to do, and try to make our resources go as far as they can. And if I have to go all the way across the eastern part of the state, I'll do that. But it's also to, to make contact with the folks that are over there that say, um, have you ever thought about, you know, putting a five thousand cow sow barn out in Butte County? Cause I know there's some people out there that, you know, used to raise hogs. Is that, is that an opportunity for us to, 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 to feed some of that feed around here? And then, and then satellite or spoke out a bunch of other operations here to keep our young people here?
Well, and, and it's an industry in ag, we, we specify a lot in South Dakota on tourism, but ag is, is also one and two with, they're one and two in South Dakota. So, eh, I'm surprised to see, and I guess I'll have to look that up or find that out, how much they spend on tourism and how much they spend on ag in South Dakota through the state. Because I think it's something that we could do a little bit, uh, more strengthening in, and you just had told me, there's a few offices here and there, but, um, if they wanna promote this, I think through your office and through others, you have to show those numbers. And everybody needs to see the numbers in order to prove or show how important either tourism or ag is. So, that's gonna come, I guess, from you and others in those departments to, to show them how important it is. And I, to me, I believe, again, those are the first two in South Dakota. Economic development, whether it be yours or locally or otherwise, I think it's huge. And I think we've promoted a lot of tourism, maybe it's time we push forward a little bit more ag.
I would agree, I would agree, but.
You know, one of the, um, um, different divisions you talked about was agritourism. And um, we've had some conversations in Pennington County about how our zoning is and everything, and how it doesn't really reflect the ability to promote agritourism. Would you define agritourism?
You know, I've, I've, I've been through this for, for a number of years. I actually used to have a PowerPoint, I could probably go back there and, and, and dig up that definition.
Even send it to us?
And, and actually, I, I did it as agriculture tourism, where it actually combined the, the um arts world in that as well too. And you usually can't talk about tourism without talking about some type of individual expression of what they do well. If it's, if it's a winemaker, um, in Hill City or Sturgis, or some other community, if it's even, um, let's say, Sturgis Meats, who create a particular type of jerky that, you know, the tourists come here and find, and boy, that is really good. Um, but then showing them how we do things. We've lost real touch, um, with the, eh, ag- agriculture's lost real touch with their urban counterparts. We all eat two or three times a day. And we don't necessarily have that connection anymore that says, w- why are we doing things the way we're, we are? And we vote for it, maybe once or twice a week when we go to the grocery store. We vote for a cheap gallon of milk. We vote for, um, eggs that came locally. We, we buy, buy some from somebody in the office. We, we, we vote for it when we go get a half a beef from our local rancher. Um, we, we vote for it maybe in other ways, especially, um, in, in more urban settings, they vote for local foods. They go to the farmer's market, they vote for organic, when they go buy s- organic product at Safeway. Agriculture industry, even though it may not seem very responsive, um, listens to all those market signals. It might take five years, ten years for them to listen to all those market signals. But I will tell you as well too, is the Rembrandt project, um, that's happening at Lake Preston, is listening to market signals. What's the big one that we've heard in the, the poultry, especially in the eggs? What do they, what do they want now?
Brown eggs.
Cage-free. Cage-free, the facility, you know, that's what they're looking at, they're looking for cage-free, so they.
I'm just laughing, my mother loves brown eggs.
Brown eggs, right, yep. Um, so agricultural tourism, um, obviously, I've been very close to that, to that sector. But it's, it's pretty limited, I mean, obviously, you know, I, I would love, well, breweries, right? Look at that, we don't think of that as being, uh, you know, an agriculturally, an agriculture processing facility, but it is.
Well, Bob, what are you classifying, uh, like our Pennington County fairgrounds that has events all but five times, five days out of the year? What are they generating fairgrounds as? And how much, and, and think about this, how much is that an economic generator for Rapid City? Whether it be the stock show or all the events that they do all year, and the outside organizations and the people they bring in?
Well, that's kind of agritourism, right? That's, that's a mixture between the people that probably don't have a connection with agriculture anymore, and the people that do. And uh, obviously, when you go, and I've worked plenty of those stock shows, uh, um, or the state fair, or, you know, a little bit of activity at the, at the central states fair, or some of the activities that are at the, um, at the central states fairgrounds. And I, I've, I am amazed by the number of people that don't have a connection to agriculture anymore. Especially our under thirty-five, under forty group, um, and, and you talk to the millennials, and it's like, woo. You know, th- they're, you know, they're coming full circle, and they're saying, well, yeah, I have bees on my rooftop and a garden out back. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm, um, buying down at the farmer's market what I can't produce. Uh, and, you know, there, there is an entirely different mindset there than what we have with the people, of the guy out here that has a thousand cows, um, running out in his pasture that he sees once a week.
Well, there's also the extension office where hundreds of kids are coming through, and are, are future, um, ag players in the community, um, and then also they're having that extension office go in our communities to teach more and more about what we do in the ag industry, that's huge. Um, just from being not in the ag industry and learning what the extension office does, and what they have been doing, has made a huge difference. But I've never heard of it in the ag economic development. In fact, I didn't know the fairgrounds until I got on the board, um, ended up doing events all year except five. Where's the economic generator for Rapid City, where's the economic generator in the ag industry? That, that could be even bigger than it is today with their help. I mean, they do need help, and I haven't seen any of them in there, um, making that difference at this point, because that's huge for western South Dakota. That's huge for what they're producing and what they're doing, and if you're at those events, um, again, I don't think Rapid City knows that, and I think that needs to be promoted more. Guess how much sale stacks and, and things that that produces compared to other industries? But the Rapid City people, and I'll tell you straight up, I didn't know either till I got in and got on the fair board. I knew it did the fair every year, and I knew it do- did the stock show at the fairgrounds. And again, um, I, I think that's kinda what we need to promote in ag, and, and economic development, and things to, to add to Rapid City, then those two start to blend. Because then they start doing events, there's like, um, farmer's market by the creek and using the, we just acquired the fairgrounds or in the process, I should say next, not fairgrounds, Apollo Fields. Different events that mix those two together and they need your help and economic development's help to make that happen. Those are huge industries, again, that I think is something simple we can start with in Western South Dakota and then add more of those companies that are coming in from the outside to those organizations to feel what, or see what fits in Pennington County or Western South Dakota. That's a, that's a top. To me, if I'm in hairstyling and I'm doing a big hair show, I'm figuring out who on that big hair show is gonna fit in with my business and then from there produce, um, hair products or whatever. I mean, why look around South Dakota? Why not go to a fairgrounds? You'll find everything you need and who you need.
The, you know, the reality of it is, is that in Western Sou- South Dakota and all places in South Dakota and the ag world, we pretty much have fewer and fewer producers all the time. And the people that have produced or had some connection to the agriculture, every time the clock ticks, um, they get a little bit farther away from agriculture. We, we, we have lost, you know, it used to be when I first started this job 15 years ago, I used to say, well, everybody in South Dakota is only one or two generations removed from, from agriculture. You know, grandpa, mom and dad or grandpa and grandma all came from a farm. And that, that was probably an exaggeration, but that's the way it seemed. And now I don't make that statement anymore. Because now I say maybe 15 or 20% of the people in our, in Rapid City have, have had any connection with the farm. Now, when we have those people that don't understand and don't have that connection with the farm, they don't understand that, you know, that the, the reason why we have the scale that we do right now is because, yeah, nobody wants to sit there and, and, uh, you know, do dairy anymore. You know, if you, if you ran a dairy out here in Western South Dakota here as, as short as probably six or eight years ago, um, you were there twice a day, 365 days a year. That was incredible lifestyle, lifestyle demand and, and those have kind of gone away. So now we have the larger dairies that say, well, okay, the people that own or manage the dairy, um, yeah, they have employees that do this. And it's not just a family operation anymore. Um, but now that creates, um, a lot of issues like, well, we don't want a big dairy because that means that, that, that you were, we're selling out to corporate farming or factory farming or whatever it might be. And that's a real travesty because I really love those, all these operations. And I like any of them that can be sustainable. On the, on the ag tour, um, in September, I, I will take you to a fairly large dairy. And I will take you to a dairy that is mom and dad, two daughters that returned from college, not with ag degrees, but other degrees, that bought two robots that do all the milking for the cows. They have 110 cows and the cows are just, it's, it's, it's like a luxury doghouse. You have these 110 cows out here in this nice big facility. Whenever they get ready to be milked, they go stand in line, the robots milk them, they get feed for their production. Their health is recorded and the two girls that are, the, the two daughters, um, they're, they're looking on their iPhone. It's like, well, you know, how are the cows doing? How, how much, how much milk did we make, you know, did we produce last, last month? And how much did it cost to feed them? Dad's out there now, he's, he's, he's a crop farmer now, as opposed to being, and they can, they can get away from the farm. That's, if we had that 10 or 15 years ago, we might still have a dairy industry out here. But there's still people that will say, boy, we just don't want anything like that. Or we, it all needs to be our vision of what agriculture is. And it's usually, um, it's usually kind of a misguided vision. So we hope that, that, you know, as we start interfacing with the communities, the fair is a good example, the stock show. I, I put it upon everybody is to say, you know, this is, this is reality for us. I love when the kids can go to the petting zoo at the Central States Fair, um, or at the Black Hills Stock Show. Absolutely just warms my heart. I support FFA and 4H and those organizations too, that are no longer rural, but they are, um, or prob- pardon me, no longer necessarily ag, but they're rural and even urban. 4H has, has transitioned to more of an urban, uh, urban activity as well, too. You have been very generous with your time.
Thank you.
And your attention, thank you very much. Anything else? Um, if, if, if there's anybody that could, uh, would want to join the ag tour, we'd love to have you. Or if you, if you send somebody down, um, we'd love to have you. Even, even the, the highway superintendent or the, um, the roads guy, cause that's, you know, he's gonna have an impact, right? Um, so maybe he should see that as well, too. So anybody, um, uh, and that's, that's all I have. Any other questions or comments?
The finance officer, do you have anything you want to tell us?
Me? No, just thank you for your time.
Well, I think, Bob, did you have a, um, a doorknob?
They coming to see you or have they already?
You know, uh, the biggest problem that we have is we don't have a, um, access to a market. You know, my wife sells stuff at the farmer's market, but if we're 50 cents higher than the produce in the stores, we can't sell it. We're competing with Walmart and they're buying from producers in California, like, well, we can grow in our garden. And I, you can't, out here.
If you're only 50 cents, uh, a pound higher, depends on what you're selling too, Bob, or what your wife is selling. Um, I'll be gladly to be at your farmer's market buying your product and the stuff in the grocery store.
You know, I, we were there last weekend and we had people come by and say, oh, the prices here are just atrocious. I can buy way cheaper in the stores and they, they left. You know, um, yeah, we sold out the stuff we had, but we, I don't produce enough to, or my wife doesn't produce enough to, to make a living on it by no means. I mean, I think worked all week just getting this stuff ready and she only sold like $250 worth of product. And, you know, heck, if you can't make a couple hundred dollars a day anymore, you can't make a living. Especially in agriculture, I, I've had four bees that were ready to go at the same time. And I tried to get my sons and mini office to sell some for me and, you know, half or quarter. They'll buy a couple steaks, but they won't buy a half anymore. Nobody has a freezer anymore or anything. I can't even sell them here.
I have a freezer, Bob, if you'd like to come. I'm, I'm volunteered.
When I come here with a bill for, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or more.
That's tough on budgets, right?
It just, yeah, it, it doesn't work, you know? There, there's not a market we can sell into. Uh, you know, the, you said, you use the chickens as a deal. If you don't sell your eggs to Tyson, you don't get into the market. They, they own the market. And, you know, uh, the meat packers own the, own the beef industry. They'll take our feeder calves and I produce them too, uh, and, and we can sell them easily or whatever they want to give us. But we don't have control over what that finished product is. When I, when I finish my own, I, I can't, I can't get it, market to sell it, not consistently and not long enough to make it work. I couldn't feed 200 cows here and, and batten them out. I have the, the ability to do that, but I don't have a market for it. I don't have a way to get rid of that meat. That's why the dairies went broken mushrooms out of Dakota, there was no market. We couldn't compete with the Walmarts and the Safeways and the milk that they could haul in here from California that, you know, California has a market, there's people there that, that take everything they got and, and they can produce even more, but.
And we are, we are finding out that now in terms of production, we are very much able to compete with California. And that's why we are actually out.
Then we got our freight to get it out of here, you know?
Right, but I would, I would much rather haul a gallon of milk to California than six loads of feed to California to, to, to make that milk.
But our feed that, that you just talked about, I, I sell hay too. And Western South Dakota is the cheapest hay in the United States. And it's because of our freight to get it out of here. I, I've sold hay to Texas, I've sold hay to Colorado and, and by the time it gets there, it's twice as much as what I got out of it, just from the freight. You know, uh.
And so to, to me.
But I don't have a way to get rid of that feed here.
To, to me, that, that's, you know, that's what ag development is all about. And, and that's kind of the, my message today is if we have all these resources, if we have the cattle, if we have the corn silage, if we have the hay, we can bring in corn off the rail, let's do the feedlot right here.
And that's what I'm saying, I can do that. I, I have the ability to feed my own cattle house. But I don't have a way to sell them.
Well, I think it, part of it is our culture. Obviously it is about scale because we, we know that with everything, uh, and I've heard this in the cattle industry as well, too, Bob. It's that, you know, if you're not, um, literally like, like, like you say, you're either selling one or two or you're selling, uh, one or 2,000, right? So that's a, that's a huge challenge. And for the people that are selling one or two, the challenge is to say, well, how do I connect with the customers? And I, you know, uh, I, I've, I've listened to the people that, you know, that, that are selling meat and beef and, uh, those products, even the farmer's market folks that are making connections, uh, with the customers. And not everybody are, is buying that, uh, because they're saying, well, gee, I can go to Walmart and buy it a lot cheaper. But then, then the onus is upon the, us as a producer or the ag industry to say, why is this, why is this better? You know, we, we produced it, that tomato was picked ripe off the vine this morning. And there will be people that will say, well, I can, I'll still go, just go to Walmart and buy it there, if it's cheaper, right? Um, that's, that's, that's the onus upon the producers and, and, and the ag industry as well, too. Um, it's certainly not an easy, uh, an easy issue to deal with.
I don't know, Bob, I'd rather have, I'd spend more for something that was fresh and from South Dakota than having it shipped in. I think maybe people, I don't know, it just seems to me, but a lot of times too, I don't know in that farmer's market and different things are going on either, so some of that might be some of the issue as well.
I love going to the farmer's market.
Yeah, I do too, just gotta figure out what times.
So I have a farmer's market story. I went down to the farmer's market over here on Omaha Street last year and they had chickens. And I said to the gentleman, I said, oh, are these heterite? And he said, no, they're non-denominational. So maybe it takes a sense of humor or something, I don't know. I bought chickens from him just for that.
That's a good story.
I think we'll close this off and thank you, Bob and Todd and.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
You folks can kind of. And we do need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A pos, a pos and carry.